I have a new job going.
My job?
Yeah.
I'm busy. Went to Glacier this weekend, never been there. Went to wedding in Bozeman, you know the Hype Rings?
Oh.
Got married in Bozeman, so we went out there. Because it's this far on the map, Bozeman to Glacier, so why wouldn't you?
Oh, there you go.
I know.
How many more hours was it?
Nine. I'm running out, so the map is too small. But that was between the cities, not Randy drove twenty hours. Well, he one of those people that want to drive.
Well, I have six o'clock. Let's get started with what?
What do these?
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Cena.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parliament.
Steen.
Here.
Mayor Buck.
Here. Okay, got the agenda in front of you, we'll look for a motion on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second on the agenda, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We've got approval of the amendments from the June 16 briefing meeting and the June 20 regular meeting. Look for a motion.
So, a second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Approval of claims on page fifteen and seventeen, we looked them over at the briefing meeting.
Who approved?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Do we have any consent to calendar?
No.
Okay. Visitors and timed items, this is an opportunity for anybody that wants to come and address the council about any particular item. Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing. Old business, what is the record? Old business.
I don't know what the record is.
Standing committee reports. Golf course, we've got some equipment surplus.
Yep, you've got a 2006 Grounds Master 3280. Staff recommends that the value is more than $500, so we have to advertise it. So, motion to approve declaring a surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the surplus sale of the 3280. More? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
And then another piece of equipment, a three-wheeled Cushman Truckster with a value of less than $500.
So, we don't need a motion for that?
Yep.
Oh, we do?
Yep.
To declare it surplus?
Declare surplus.
Okay.
I'll move that.
Motion and a second to declare the Cushman Truckster as surplus. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries, we've got some seasonal employees to hire.
Yep, Kate Livingston in the maintenance department and Lucas Hendricks in the community room.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the seasonal employees. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Parks and Rec saw the work report, busy time of the year.
Mm-hmm.
What have we got?
We've got an alcohol consumption permit for Van Buskirk Park submitted by AG Menden on August 26th for a neighborhood block party.
Motion second to approve the block party in Van Buskirk Park, the alcohol consumption permit. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, vendor at Aspen Park.
Carmen Childs, she owns Family Treats Homemade Ice Cream, has applied for a vendor's or permission to sell product down at Aspen Park during baseball softball events primarily.
Is this something she's done in the past?
She's done it in the past three years and we just kind of connected that she needs council permission to do that, so we have no issues.
Baseball softball doesn't have any issues with that?
No, actually I think their concession operator invited her down three years ago.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the vendor in Aspen Park. Any further discussion?
Now, does she have to do this every year?
Yep.
If she wants to do it?
Yep, I talked to her, she'll submit her next request for the next year, probably in April, so.
Any further discussion?
How much does a peddler's license cost?
Hundred dollars.
Probably bucks for the year.
For the year.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Public safety?
You've got the inspection report and then you've got the fire financials for the first six months of the year that is included with their request for first half payment.
Do we need a motion on that? We do, don't we? We don't, okay. Chief Teffel.
Quick report on the weekend, the fireworks, we did, we do track it every year. We started three days early this year because we had a bunch of complaints on the 27th, which we normally don't start till the first, so if you take those away, we were at 11, which the last few years we've been at 10 or 13. The vast majority of them are either out in the county or there was a lot of officer initiated where they just went out with people, advised them of the ordinance, gave out, we had them hand out the, a copy of the ordinance just to remind people. We also did several postings leading up to it, I think, starting on the first to, you know, try and get people to follow the ordinance and behave themselves, but all in all, no real big reports, I think it was a successful year and unfortunately we did have a couple fires in town, which is unfortunate, but nobody was hurt that I'm aware of. We did buy fireworks or the fires themselves, so all in all, I think it was fairly successful as far as the ordinance goes anyways.
I did see your posts and just wanted to say thank you for doing that, I thought it was proactive and the engagement with the public was, was nice too and it was very sad to hear about the fires.
Yeah, it is unfortunate.
Fire department's pretty busy, I think they had three that day.
Yeah, well, there was two in town I know and I think there was a grass fire right outside of town. I'm not 100% positive on that, but I think it was a grass fire right outside of town, so, yeah. And then, of course, today there's several, we've been working with, we've worked with Raleigh and Donovan, there's lots of trees down around town and stuff too, so, but I think we came out all right on that too, so. Other than that, the same, do you have any questions? Just a quick recap.
Good job. Thanks. Moving on to administration.
The communications report is in your packet. And then we've got 50th anniversary is coming up, probably, we incorporated July 1973, so our 50th anniversary is coming up July of 2023, so I thought it might be time to throw it out there for the, to the council to see if you wanted to do anything, or if you wanted to partner with some organizations, for instance, the Chamber, the VFW, Optimist Club, et cetera, to see if we can't get something rolling. So, 12 months is pretty short, but.
Yeah, I think we should do something, I'm getting a few suggestions and I, but I think it would be a good thing to work with Chamber on, maybe? Or the VFW, or both?
We could send out an invite to any of the service organizations, just see if they're interested.
Yeah, let's do that.
Bring them in, just ask them if they're interested in doing anything, if so, what? And they kind of coordinate from there. So, we could, we can do that.
Okay, good.
I, real quick too, I think anything too, just kind of brainstorming, anything that we can do to incorporate kids, I know having young kids, man, if we can do anything to, parents are always looking for something we can do with our kids and if we can do something in town, that'd be cool.
You know, if it's going to be in July, we could do something, you know, down at Aspen and McCarty, kind of in between the seasons.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not so busy down there, we could certainly coordinate something pretty easily.
Two of the ideas I've heard include a dunk tank for the mayor.
Yes. Raleigh, Raleigh and the guys can build a dunk tank. We don't have one, but we can make one. Yeah.
Sounds like a great idea.
And the council. I'm not going down by myself.
So, do you want one big dunk tank for everybody or just one person at a time?
Did your wife suggest that?
No. Exactly. We could raise some money there, eh? Okay, yeah, if we could communicate with organizations around town, I think that'd be terrific. Declare surplus items, page 32 to 35.
Yeah, we've got a number of items that we as staff believe are, have reached their useful life, so we would like to get rid of them, the council needs to declare them surplus property. And then we can either talk to the auction site north of town or Councilmember Jorgensen had an idea of a motel.
Liquidator?
Liquidator, may come in and take a look at some stuff, so we just need the council to declare it surplus. Each item is valued at under $500 and actually junk.
Yeah. I'll look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second to declare the surplus items. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 20 dash 22, adopting the 23 to 27 capital improvement plan.
This is the, the list of capital projects for the next five years based upon our CIP meetings that we had a month or so ago. The big change, if you remember, is Core Phase 2B, which is Third Street in lieu of Ironwood. Then I did add language to that last paragraph, if our financial position improves, Parks Department, City Buildings, Golf Course will receive priorities.
I'll look for a motion on that.
As painful as it is, I'll say, I'll make the motion.
I live on Third Street.
Seven.
Motion and second to approve the capital improvement plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We have the South Dakota National Guard enlisted association rifle, raffle at the VFW. Is that something, need the permission for?
Nope, nope, only if you want to deny it.
Okay.
The door is nice enough to tell us.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll move forward. And quotes to demolish the house at 303 East Elm. We've got a couple bids. We looked at those at the briefing meeting.
Yep. Sukup construction for $10,100 and SGO LLC for $8,500.
And both companies are good.
So, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion and second to accept a low bid for the house demolish at 303 East Elm. Any further discussion?
Is this the one that you were recommending we don't go with a low bid on briefing?
Um, no, not necessarily, both of them are good. Sukup is just a little bit easier to schedule with because they're doing the core area, but we'll work around it. So, SGO is fine.
We'll coordinate with the fire department.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Streets. You've got some work to do, mister. As if you didn't already. Yeah, what do we, it's not on the agenda, but I think, you know, we need to talk about the storm we just had today.
Yeah, Raleigh and I talked, we'll get a, the police departments out, contact, and they're, and they're looking for trees that are down, they're contacting the public works departments, we've got a list of areas that we need to get trees off of the road right now. Raleigh and I will get together tomorrow morning to see how much damage we've got throughout the community and then we'll contemplate opening up the tree dump.
Yeah, we need to do that, obviously. I drove around town for a little bit and saw four streets that had trees laying in the street, they weren't completely blocked. A couple over on Dakota.
Yep.
And one on Spruce and one on Chapelwood, I think I saw. And that's just why I drove around town for 50.
Yeah, we, we started receiving reports soon after it started of trees down, including one in Christina's Boulevard and stuff like that.
I would completely support that too, our phones were ringing off the hook, there's a lot down.
So, we'll get a report probably tomorrow morning.
When would you think that we would want to open up the tree dump?
Uh, you know, we try to hit it in, on weekends, give folks some time to, to clean up a little bit, get organized and then not have to worry about going into work.
Maybe the next two weekends?
Yeah, we'll take a look, see what we've got for, for damage.
And get the, get the word out, okay. The regular work report, I think we've all seen it. Any questions? Uh, the bike and pedestrian plan amendment.
This is just extending their time to complete the report until the end of September. This doesn't add any cost to the report.
Okay, that doesn't need an approval? It does, okay.
I'll make the motion, second.
Motion and second to approve the bike and pedestrian plan amendment. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Engineering design standards, chapters three and four, they were on page 46 and 50 to 59.
Yeah, just take a look at the proposed changes that are shown in red. If you would like to change something, do ahold of Tammy or myself and we can take a look at those.
Okay.
Right now it's just reading for you.
Great.
Uh, one thing while we're on streets, any update on Slurry Seal dates?
They plan to be in town July 18th. So, with the weather today, I'm expecting that to get pushed just a few days. But they are planning.
What section of town is getting that?
So, it'll be the Bluffs, Eagle Creek, and then part of Sioux Heights, which is kind of that area back behind Casey's.
How do we let people know?
Um, I updated the Facebook page, well, I update on the Bluffs Facebook page and then our website has the page that I can update all the construction for and, and then we do door hangers too. So, that's about all we can do.
It's always a little flexible as to when they're going to start and.
Not a little flexible, it's a lot flexible. They like to change streets on you and who knows how much they're actually going to get done in one day and if the temperature's not perfect, drying time takes too long, so.
Very weather dependent.
Okay, water and sewer. Where are we at with water usage?
Well, we dropped a little bit yesterday, down to 1.5 and 1. Okay. So, we had the same conversation last year with water usage. Technically, we hit our trigger of 1.6 million gallons for five days in a row on Friday. We got the information today. The question like we talked about Thursday, do we want to take a look at those triggers and adjust or what would you like us to do?
What do you recommend we do?
Well, you know, Raleigh and I talked Friday, he's still a little uncomfortable with, with kind of what I'm thinking. You know, we've had, we've had growth. I think we could probably bump up the triggers, I gave you some numbers there on that first sheet that I handed out for you. You know, 70% of the capacity of the plant, if you, if you back out the backwash filters, and I'm not an engineer, so, you know, these are just my calculations, it's about 1.89, so about 1.9 million gallons a day, that's running the plant 70%, 70% capacity. You know, you don't want to run it at 90 for sure for very, you can, you just don't want to do it very long. You know, I use the analogy of I can drive my car down the interstate at 120 mile an hour plus, I just don't want to do it for eight straight hours. Should we bump it up to 1.8? I, I would be certainly comfortable with that, you know, certainly ask Raleigh if he'd be comfortable with 1.8. That's where we have our disagreement.
What's your, what's your hesitation, Raleigh?
Well, my hesitation is that the water treatment plant on June 29th ran 16.9 hours, the 28th it ran 17.5, and on the 27th it ran 17.7. Those three days, the 27th we put out 1.936, 28th we put out 1893, and the 29th we put out 1854. So, if you're running the plant 17 to 18 hours a day, it starts cutting into the time of when I can do backwashes. And then take into consideration that we also had three fires this week. So, I guess I'm a little concerned that, and if you actually look at the wastewater flows that came into the plant over the last few days, excuse me, we were below 600,000 gallons. So, you're dumping 1.2 million to 1.3 million now on the yards. Yeah, July 3rd it was 547,000 that we pumped to Sioux Falls. Fourth, we pumped 538,000, and the fifth, we pumped 591,000. So, actually four days in a row below 600,000. So, that's my concern. I don't want the city to get into a bind where we don't have the water for a major fire. Granted, this house fire was contained mostly to the garage and somewhat of the attic, but I'm just concerned if we ever had a fire like they had in Corson at the elevator that last time, they used nearly 800,000 gallons of water. So, I'm just concerned, and if we're trying to conserve water by bumping up your numbers, I don't think it's conserving. It's, to me, it's a waste. I'll see sprinklers running tomorrow now and we just had over an inch and a half of rain. And you need an inch to keep your yard green a week. So, that's my big concern.
What does, if we bumped up the trigger, what, what does that do?
It goes from green, which is even odd, which is our normal status, if we, right now the trigger is 1.6 million gallons a day for five consecutive days, that would put us into yellow, which is one day a week watering based upon the last number of your addresses. 01 would be Monday, 23 is Tuesday, et cetera, and then, is it 2? What's the trigger to go into red? 2? 2.1? 2 million? And then we've got a red stage, which is no long watering. Now, this doesn't affect washing your car or watering your garden or watering plants, et cetera, this is just lawn watering that it affects. If we go to red, which is another, is it 10 days consecutive or seven more days consecutive exceeding the 1.6, we move into red. And then we've also got the, the reverse triggers where if water, water usage falls below the trigger point for a number of days, it will revert back to the previous stage.
I hear what you're saying, Raleigh, and I'm, I'm all for conservation too, however, we've had these numbers for quite several years, we've had growth, I mean, it could be justified to raise it up a bit from that standpoint. The Corson fire, once in a, I don't, I don't know how often that would hap, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I wonder if we need to give a titch or we just want to stay with where we're at? I, I don't have a strong preference either way. I agree with you, the higher we make it, the just, the water.
Yeah, the higher we move the trigger, they're, they're probably going to use that water. Looking at Doors, kind of did a review of some of the high water usages over the last month, the vast majority of them are probably new yards. Is what, you know, we're seeing, at least on, on this list. Uh, there are a few that were established, you know, one in particular, he had some pretty high usage, but his yard is huge, so he was actually watering what he should, if he wants to water his whole yard, which was good size, but there's a few here, you know, there's one new yard, used 80,000 gallons, should be using about 40, 41,000. So, I did have a, a nice call with a sod company today, they wanted to know what our water, so he actually called, I wanted to know what our restrictions were, so, and he was fine with, you know, no water between 10 and 6. So, as long as they get a water restriction or exception, he was fine with that, so he's got some orders coming up, so he's going to tell his clients, follow that and come in and get one since it's free. He was a little surprised it was free. Couple other tweaks in that, in that resolution I've got attached there. I didn't put in any gallons just to have some discussion. Instead of five consecutive days, I went five consecutive business days. So, if it falls on a weekend again, it gives us a little bit of room to get notices out. Like this weekend, you know, was a three-day holiday weekend, a good percentage of our people were out of town, so even if we had triggered it, I'm not sure if we would have had a lot of compliance with some of the folks. And then the other thing, on the last page there with, with the violations, right now we've got a written warning placed on the door for the first violation. Second violation's 150 bucks, third violation's 300, and then the fourth one is we shut your water off. Speaking with a couple of folks, there's at least one neighbor in community that doesn't give a warning. They just find you 100, I think it's 150 bucks. Yep.
What if, what if we haven't these numbers before?
Same thing. I didn't change any though, I'm just.
Just saying.
We've, we've been doing this program for four or five years now. I'm, I'm not sure if we need warnings, I guess it's weren't going. So, may, maybe it's a compromise, we increase the trigger, but we get rid of a warning. Quite frankly, the guy that, the, I shouldn't say the guy, the property owner that used 80,000 gallons, his water bill's going to be 800 bucks roughly. 150 dollars isn't really much. Like we talked about at the briefing meeting, I think later this year when we review water rates, I think we really need to take a look at tiers two or three and four. And what those volume charges are. Because those are really the, the ones that are causing problems.
Yeah.
With usage.
So, speaking of, we shouldn't have to warn people anymore, I wonder if we need to do another bout with the Chamber with businesses? I saw one this weekend that was watering not on their day and I know another one was called out on social media. I get frustrated by that too, because I agree they should know by now. From the conservation side standpoint, we did visit about this back in our February meeting during water conservation. We're all about conserving, however, with the growth, the committee did actually recommend back in February that we changed to the 1.8 because of that growth. It is challenging to not to give a little bit when we have the kind of growth that we've had, and we've had hundreds of households and we've had businesses and developments and annexations since the numbers were set, so, especially hearing that a lot of these are new homes, I, I think that, that we just need to do that. I did want to ask about the, the addition of the business days. Are you planning to go retroactive then if, if we go over whatever our triggered amount is, if it's 2 million or if that changes, if that happens on a Saturday? I'm, I'm just a little apprehensive to use business days and then have the public think that weekends are kind of. I'm just a little apprehensive to use business days and then have the public think that weekends are kind of a free pass.
Yeah, and I, you know, I thought about that, too. I agree. I was just thinking if the trigger falls on a Saturday, we could do it as we do it now. We don't get the information till Monday. So we could certainly implement it on Monday and get the word out. It's more about getting the word out and letting them get it out. So if you don't, if you're uncomfortable with the business things, I agree, because all of a sudden, people are going, hey, it's Saturday, Sunday. It's not a business day. Let's go. That's fine.
You know, I'm... Just my two cents. I just, you know, just listen to Raleigh, who's ultimately the expert in this room. I just, I'm having a hard time going above the 1.6. I know we've got the growth, but, you know, again, water is a commodity, and I just... I'm having a hard time just seeing, you know, what is it? Is it sixty percent of the people are using, or is it... Thirty percent are using sixty percent of the... I mean, you know, I know we've got growth, but at the same time, I know there's other communities around here that, in my appraisal business, neighboring communities aren't putting in sod right now because they have water restrictions in their community right now, so they're not even putting in sod. We're still allowing people, you know, put in sod and water. So I guess I would, in my opinion, I'd push towards we stay as is and try to get people to understand we need to conserve. We need to conserve in this community. Water is just not... It's a commodity.
I'm just going to comment on the language, not the numbers. You could certainly have to address the concerns that were just raised. The yellow designation is automatically in effect the first business day after the water treatment plant produces X million dollars for five business days. And then you can flip that over on the next page, saying the first business day after. So, you know, if you have a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it's four days, it doesn't go in effect until Monday. So that way, we're not finding people until Monday when maybe they're home. So that would be a way to address that issue of finding businesses and homeowners when they're gone on the weekends. So we could easily do that, and then you don't have to worry about the five consecutive business days versus just regular days. But that would...
When it goes to red, is that two million? What is that trigger for the red? Two?
Have we heard anything from our city engineer? Do you have an opinion? I know you worked really closely with the water study in AE2S. You're on water conservation. Do you have an opinion on the plant doing 1.8 or not being a good idea?
You know, talking with a couple of our consultants that work with our water and our water model and our water treatment plant, I think they feel pretty comfortable with the 1.8 number. I do agree with Raleigh that, you know, there has to be a line somewhere where it can't just be wasted on lawns. There's a big difference between using water and wasting water. We want everybody to have a nice green yard and enjoy their yard, but a lot of it comes down to education on how much water you really need. If you bump it up to the 1.8, they're going to use the 1.8. Soon, we'll have our big water tower online, you know, so next year, it's not going to be an issue with fire safety and that sort of thing. I'm comfortable with the 1.8, but I still think we need to keep on with the education on the water conservation part of it.
I struggle with this. I mean, are we waving the white flag and just saying, you know, there's nothing we can do? We've tried to educate folks for a while now, and we'll continue those education efforts.
What has our growth been since this was implemented? Was this 2018?
2017 was the first attempt. I went back and looked, and we've had 250 single-family dwellings from 2017 through last year. So I didn't include the thirty yet this year.
So what's that, probably like eight percent or so?
You know, looking at it, and I just ran some real quick stuff today. You know, when AE2S did that rate study, it was thirty percent, uses sixty percent of the water. The vast, vast majority, I haven't looked at the 250 homes, but I would venture to guess the vast majority of them have sprinklers. With that in mind, it increases that from thirty percent to about thirty-five percent of the folks, so, or property owners, I should say. You know, 250 homes, we're five, it's about 50 homes a year average. Last year kind of was an anomaly when we had eight-seven. So it's about...
It's about seven and a half percent increase?
Yeah, spread out. So it's about a percent and a half growth every year. What was interesting, what I thought, was when I look back on water consumption, 2019 through 2022, in the winter months, goes up about four percent, or a little under five percent a year. Summer consumption only goes up about two and a half. You know, we can't use 2020 because nineteen was an anomaly with how wet it was, so nobody had to water that. So it's kind of tracking both residential growth and watering. It's kind of tracking about what I thought. Five percent growth for winter consumption versus two and a half percent growth summer consumption.
How much have we grown with development, more on the, like, the areas that we've annexed in and the commercial spaces that...
So far, none of those are online. The Brandon 90 Plaza is still under construction. The Hague Development is still under construction. So they haven't come online. The pit, the sand pit, I don't believe they're using any water, except for maybe dust control, which isn't much. What else? I think that's... I think that's all that we've annexed in the last few years that I can pick up. Now, when those two commercial developments come online, I would anticipate, you know, there's going to be water in the grass as well.
Well, some businesses, too.
Yeah.
Cannabis grow facility is going to use a lot of water, I would...
No, no, they're not. That was one of the questions that we asked on their application, how much water demand and how much sewer demand they used. I was very surprised, 1,000 gallons a day for a cultivation facility. It's kind of the number. And they don't use a lot of water. It's a drip irrigation typically, and they don't want to overwater because then that dilutes their fertilizer mix that they use to get their certain potency of their product. So they've got all that dialed in. So I think the largest one I saw was estimated to be about 1,000 gallons a day. So I don't see a huge demand in the cannabis business.
Tim or Dave, got a thought?
I'm just kind of curious. I don't see it... What did we use yesterday on the fourth, considering that there were a couple of fires?
July fourth, so it's actually July third, reading, was 1.604. Eight-four was 1.578.
1.604 even with the fire? We never dumped a lot of water on that.
Tim, what are your thoughts?
Well, I guess, you know, if we up the amount, then it's not exactly sending a message of conservation, in my opinion. Even with growth, I do believe that we still have the ability to conserve water. Now, I guess, you know, if our engineer is okay with it, then I lean towards maybe 1.8 is fine. I know that if people are allowed 1.8, they'll use two. That's just the way it is. We allow them 1.6 now before a trigger goes off, and we get up to 1.9. So I don't... I'm not really sure. I guess I would lean towards the side of conservation. I mean, I guess, like, we've been pushing conservation for the last five years, so why would we do something that sort of goes against that? I guess that would be my thought.
So if we stick with what we have, right now, we've hit the trigger, correct? But we haven't pulled the trigger.
Correct.
Are we planning on pulling the trigger if we don't?
If the triggers aren't adjusted, we will get the notices out tomorrow that we are moving to yellow effective tomorrow.
Then that seems, you know, just after we got two and a half inches of rain.
Right.
We've been under the trigger for the last, for a couple of days in there, so we need to count that as the redemption period. We're kind of behind the eight ball.
So I would anticipate with the rain that we had, was it Sunday night, then again today, and then I think there's chances of rain tomorrow and Thursday possibly, or Friday, I would anticipate that we'd hit the trigger to go back to green. At least I would hope so. Let's put it that way.
Does it have to go up by increments of two? Like, what's wrong with 1.7?
Nothing.
Might be a compromise.
Yeah, with the added growth, I guess if you look for a motion, I'd make a motion, split the difference, go to 1.7. I think we still kind of hit the trigger of 1.7, but...
We've got a motion.
Is that just the yellow? Or about the red?
We could leave the red. Maybe you leave the red at two.
Okay.
Do you want to do anything about the business days or the consecutive days?
No, I think we'll just do kind of what we've been doing.
Right now, we've got a motion to move the trigger to 1.7.
For yellow.
I support moving it, but I just don't think that's enough. I think if we're going to do something, it needs to be more of an equal match to our growth.
Well, that kind of sends a bit of a signal that we're growing, therefore, we're going to bump it up a little.
You know, I'm kind of hoping that this gets us to the point, two years down the road, where we have added capacity, we've got added storage, and it shows some compromise on our part, but still holds on to the conservation message.
But on the flip side, I mean, even just a cannabis facility that doesn't use very much is going to use 30,000 in a month. So we're just upping it for three cannabis facilities, and that doesn't account for the hundreds of households or the other businesses or developments that are coming. So I just, I feel like, I've been on water conservation for as long as I've been on council, and again, the recommendation from the Water Conservation Committee is to change to the 1.8. So if the water conservation people are encouraging this and our engineer is supportive of this, that's what I would ask that we...
We've kind of jumped ahead of ourselves. Until we get the motion, we really don't need to discuss it.
No, there hasn't been a second.
And we don't have a second?
There may be a second.
So without a second, the motion fails. And so let's move on.
So I'll make a motion that we move to 1.8.
And to leave the 2 million?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion to move to 1.8. Looking for a second. Okay, without a second, that motion dies also. Any other discussion on water? Okay. New business, we have an executive session.
Yes, we do. So we do the motion to go into executive session. So move.
Motion a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Okay.
I'm looking it out, so I can't say. It's on potential litigation, and my firm has conflict with the after party. Hi, is there anything after? You want me to sit down with that car? Okay. Home, somebody will get barbed.
I got it.
Okay, thanks.